Sir, I'm willing, I'll explain why. We're gonna start the March 14th Penn Trapper School Directors Meeting in order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Leggo, full confidence.
Yes, sir. Mr. President. Mrs. Ising.
Here.
Mr. Cassidy.
Here.
Dr. Cosco.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stovabar.
Here.
And Dr. Tre, even though you don't have a name plate, I'll see if you ask.
Over here.
Okay. You have four, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leggo. Okay, entertaining motion for approval of minutes for the February 8th meeting.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Chris Cassidy, second on motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Matarazzo. Any question on motion? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Information, Dr. Harris.
Sure. We're gonna first start off, I know Trent was actually here last week, so he's, I know he's on the agenda, but he's not here this week. We're gonna first start off recognizing students of the month. This is actually our favorite part of each month, favorite part of the meeting, and I always say this is why we do what we do. It's for the students, and when you hear their accomplishments, everything they do, this is why we put all the hours into what we do to this job, and all the school members show up and work hard with us. So we're gonna start off with Joe Marassi from McCullough.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce the Elementary Student Month for McCullough, and that's Olivia Pepple. Come on up, Olivia. This is, this is a little more relaxing than it is being called to the office and wondering why. Olivia's the daughter of Tracy and Toni Pepple. She has a sister, Emily, who's a junior, and a brother, Jacob, a freshman here at the high school. When talking to Olivia's parents, they were quick to let me know that Olivia is mature beyond her years. She's the one in the family that you never have to ask her to do anything. She's a hard worker and an avid reader. Olivia is very active and balances her social life and school life very well. Outside of school, she plays both soccer and AAU basketball. I was told she can always be counted, excuse me, I was told she can always be counted upon to make everyone laugh at the dinner table. Emily even mentioned that she has quite an imagination as well. True? When talking with Olivia, who is concerned about being in the office to begin with, she let me know that the best guard of school is reading and her specials. She enjoys all of her teachers because they're nice and readily available to help. Olivia is very active outside of school, as her parents mentioned, with both soccer and basketball. Her AAU team, the Bruins, is coached by her high school basketball coach, Mr. Rocco. In her leisure time, she can be found reading nonfiction chapter books, or getting along with her sister when she's home, which we're glad to see Emily got a night off, or arguing periodically with her brother. When discussing Olivia with her teachers, they pointed out she's a strong student, she is very bright, conscientious, hard worker, that is persistent to accomplish whatever she puts her mind towards. Olivia is always willing to help another student or teacher with anything that she's asked to do, and a friend to everyone. She can be just as strong as a leader, as a team player. Along with her educational successes, she enjoys sports, and is especially interested and focused on becoming a strong and successful basketball player. She knows that her positive attitude is not limited to one aspect of her life. She is well-rounded and absolutely pleasant student to have in your classroom. She is an outstanding role model for her peers. Congratulations, Olivia, on being the Elementary Student Month.
Made your parents, your grandparents, very proud. Are you gonna watch March Madness?
Uh, yeah.
Are you done for your? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And Ms. Marassi, what's happening at McCullough now?
Um, just one thing that I'd like to mention is something new, and it's in conjunction with Sunrise Elementary. Ms. Kearns, our music teacher, is putting together a culture fest. And the culture fest is, is something that we've been talking about for several years. It's gonna take place on Sunday, May 1st, from 12 until 5 at McCullough. And basically what it is, is the students were asked what countries they would like to have at this culture fest, and food is gonna be made from those independent countries. They're gonna have dancers, there's gonna be singers that will be there as well, and right now, we have basically 21 different countries that are gonna be represented. So there are musical acts, it should be a tremendous afternoon for all that wanna come. I'm hoping that I have enough parking, to be honest with you, so I'll be relying on Mr. Simpson to use his parking lot just a little bit.
Rumors leaked over to me that Ms. Marassi dancing, so I will, I will make sure I show up to that culture fest.
But, yeah, we're looking forward to it, and again, that's a tribute to Ms. Kearns and working at both schools, McCullough and Sunrise. Mrs. Quinter in conjunction with that as well, so here's what's going on.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the Student of the Month from Penn Middle, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Elena, please come on. Introduce Elena Moorhead. She's an eighth grader at Penn Middle School at our March through the month. She's the daughter of Mick and Lori Moorhead, and the older sister to two younger brothers, Garrett and Travis. When I spoke to her parents, they told me that when she came to Penn Middle two and a half years ago, she was a different child than the young lady she is today. She was shy and didn't wanna stand out from others. Well, if you saw her at the talent show last week, she's not shy, she sang three awesome songs. Today, she's confident and strong. She's a leader that respects others, she's kind and compassionate, she's been on the high honor roll every grading period, her entire lifetime at Penn Middle. She participated in the middle school cheer in seventh, eighth grade, and this year she was chosen to be a cheer captain. She's been involved in the Penn Middle School Drama Club for all three years, having the lead role as mom in The Christmas Story and The Fairy Godmother coming up here in May. I'm sorry, in Cinderella coming up here in May. She's participated in chorus the last three years and has performed solos at the last two concerts. She's a huge circle of friends and loves to spend time with family, that is a huge priority to her, and she's a great role model for her younger brothers. She has the most contagious laugh and smile. She brightens her whole world with her pure heart, and as her parents, they feel they are truly blessed and proud to have a young lady, for her to have, forgive me, as her parents, they are truly blessed and proud of the young lady she's become. She's both beautiful on the outside and inside, and they feel lucky to be her mom and dad and want to set the world on fire. I spoke to her two younger brothers, Travis, who's a first grader at Sunrise, says she's sometimes mean, but not all the time. Sometimes else she does my homework, and the favorite thing to do with her is swim in our pool. She's a pretty good big sister. Garrett, who's a sixth grader at Penn Middle School, says surprisingly, they get along most of the time. She's a pretty good big sister. Two times, little brothers are saying she's a pretty good big sister. He's proud of the level of pride she takes in her work, and he enjoys when she has friends over, 'cause she lets him hang out with them. Elena's teachers say a lot of the same thing, conscientious, thoughtful, and always there to lend a helping hand. Elena gives 110 percent and is an excellent role model for her peers. She constantly comes to class with positive attitude and is always willing to help her fellow classmates. She possesses leadership qualities that other classmates look up to. She's a very kind, hardworking, organized, outgoing, and well-rounded young lady. She's willing to help other students when needed and gets along with everyone. The general consensus among her teachers is she is very deserving of this acknowledgement. She strives for excellence in everything she does. So congrats, Elena, on being the Penn Middle School Student of the Month for March.
Great background, made your parents, grandparents, very proud. Take care of your little brothers, as well as much as you can, and continue success to you.
Thank you.
And what's going on at Penn Middle?
Uh, this Friday, the Penn Middle School eighth graders will be traveling to Trapper Middle School, where we have our joint career fair. It's no longer a career fair, now it is a financial reality fair. We're teaming with the credit union, West One County Federal Credit Union, and this is what the career fair has morphed into. Students took an interest inventory in PA Career Zone, and based on the interest, selected a career, and there's a documented average salary that comes with that career. Then they'll go through eight different sections, budgeting, insurance, mortgage, cars, entertainment, things like that. At the end of those sessions, they'll meet with a financial counselor to review their budget sheet based on their selection's documented salary. So it is morphed from a career fair where they learned about careers to understanding about budgeting with what that career can give them. So we're real pleased to move in that direction.
It's great to hear. Thank you so much. And our last student of the month, Mr. Quillo from high school.
Thank you, Andre. Come on up here. The High School Student of the Month for March is senior Andre Guest, and he's joining this evening with his brother and sister-in-law, Sean and Catherine Manning. Andre is a true leader, although he has the size to physically get people to do what he wants, he doesn't, he doesn't need to. He's quite, quite the opposite. People follow him because he is genuine, intelligent, passionate, and has the respect towards others that is beyond special. Few of his teachers wrote, Stephanie Brugman, who teaches him college calculus too, Andre is quite simply amazing. I've had him for class, in class for two years now. While most people already know how brilliant he is and how hardworking he is, there's a side to Andre that most people would never expect. He is gracious and humble, almost to a fault. Andre finds success in many different realms, yet I've never heard him be boastful about anything. Andre quietly goes about his business and does his thing. She says she remembers overhearing him unsuccessfully try to convince two fellow football players to join him and try it out for the musical. He argued that they should step out of their comfort zone and try something a little different together. They were unconvinced that would be as new for Andre as it was for them. She could've summed up all of her thoughts about Andre by saying that, "I'm constantly amazed by him, he has every reason in the world to brag about something, and yet he never does." His volleyball coach, Jim Shaw, it would take a long time to share all of Andre's positive qualities, but here are some. Andre is unique and an awesome young person. He's been a part of the volleyball team for four years now, and I feel blessed to be able to coach such a good kid. Although he did well as a freshman, he played sparingly. He continued to work at it and has developed into a very good player, who was a VRC starter last year as a junior. He's a good player, but just as important, he's a team leader and a great role model. He does all the little things, like being one of the guys in charge of putting up and tearing down all the equipment and nets for practice. Besides what he does in sports, everyone has good things to say about Andre. He is quiet, humble, and well-liked by his peers as well as his teachers. His business teacher, Ms. Dufkovich, Andre is one of the most humble and intelligent students I've ever worked with. He demonstrates his leadership in so many different ways, and is extremely powerful to watch. And amazingly enough, it happens each and every day. She mentioned that when the T-shirt project they were doing was not effectively, their team wasn't communicating and was demonstrating some major lack of focus within the class, Andre stepped in, didn't hesitate, and ran a team-building activity aimed at bringing everyone together. During the team activity, she witnessed Andre gracefully discuss all the team's shortcomings and how it was impacting their overall performance. The love over respect he receives from his peers is amazing. His influence helped the team regroup to be part of the best T-shirt project ever. This year, he also qualified for the state-level Future Business Leaders of America competition in the area of management and decision-making. His college stats teacher, Ms. Bronwyn, says, "I have nothing but positive things to say about Andre. This morning in our math meeting, we all talked about Andre. We all agree that he is one of the nicest people we've ever met. He stands out among his peers, academically, of course, but along with his intellect, he is kind, giving, helpful, positive, enthusiastic, and mature. He is the kind of person that makes people around him feel good about themselves. He finds the redeeming quality in just about everything he does. I wish him all the best and look forward to hearing about his many, many future successes." His AP Physics C teacher, Ryan Tooser, Andre is an extremely gifted student academically in his extracurricular activities. He is near the top of his AP Physics class and finds time for football, wrestling, volleyball, musical, the pasta bridge building, and tutoring to physics students who are struggling. He is always willing to voice his opinion about how the world works, even if he is initially incorrect. It seems there's nothing Andre cannot do. And finally, from Ms. Haberberger, the drama sponsor for the musical, not that I asked, not that you asked me, but I heard that Andre has a beautiful singing voice. I found him during homeroom one day and said, "I heard you had the voice of an angel. Would you consider auditioning for the musical?" Without hesitation, he said, "I was thinking about it, when are auditions?" He could've just said that to me to shut me up, but he actually came to auditions where he had to sing and dance, something he did without resistance or any trepidations. He was cast as Sir Dudley in our musical, Once Upon a Mattress, and has fit seamlessly in with the drama guild. We couldn't be happier, except when it came time to fit him in costume. Finally, some final things I had to say about Andre. Uh, yes, Andre is the vice president of the Future Business Leaders of America. He was voted homecoming king, he is actively involved in the community service programs through our CAP program. He will be playing in the PA Scholastic Football Coach Association East-West game. He will be singing and dancing on stage as part of our musical production. He wrestles, and yes, he will be attending Princeton in the fall. The list can go on forever. But what do most people associate Andre with? Above all else, being a blessing to our school, community, and most importantly, a perfect example of how we hope all people choose to live their lives. As principal, it's an honor to recognize Andre Guest as a Student of the Month for March. Congratulations, student of the month.
Great job, outstanding career, and everyone enjoying watching you play football. Continued success to you. You wouldn't have done any better, any better.
Thank you.
This is a two-time. I have this time where I take some photos of the press. This is the three students of the month. George, I do have a sign up in the back. Is that okay, we move to the back? All right. So the three students of the month can come back to our Penn Trapper display. This is our school board's honor.
Of course, Andre's tall.
I definitely have a six, I see all your musicals. You ready for the march?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You graduated?
No, thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. There's no, there's not much?
Thank you so much.
Um, parents, if you wanna, if you wanna leave, you're welcome to leave. No parent has ever stayed for the next hour and a half. So that is completely up to you. We're not a family. And, um, hey, it's early even, you can have a party for the high school, and then Ms. Habb, before you get Ms. Habb her left, I noticed she stuck with Once Upon a Mattress. I know she wants to play, so I was hoping to catch her before she goes.
Yeah, Ms. Habb left the Once Upon a Mattress brochure, guess her flyer there, for April 1st, when the show starts. Hopefully, there's no conflict, but as you probably have heard also, our PT mock trial team actually won West One County, I think about two weeks ago. First time ever since it started in, I think, 1988. They've done a great job, have a young team, they're, they're actually gonna go again tomorrow night. The regionals are held at West One County Courthouse. So tomorrow night's 5 o'clock, if you're interested, courtroom number three. Not sure who they take on, but if they do win that, then they will go on to the state finals, which is actually opening night of the musical, which we have a lot of kids who are doing both. So hopefully, they would do great, great things and make the states, but if that happens, we will have some, some conflict. We also have an assembly this Friday. I'm not sure, I'm sure you got the email back in 2002, a 13-year-old named Belisha Kozakowicz, I'm not sure I ripped that apart, but she is coming in from Chicago to present to our 12th grade students. She fell victim to the internet, was basically kidnapped from her Pittsburgh neighborhood. I guess she was taken for about, I think, three or four days. The FBI found her, rescued her, but through our senior projects, all these seniors go out and do research, do different topics, and one of her topics was actually on traffic, human trafficking, and it kinda led to her, got in touch with her, and actually she did all the connecting, and she's gonna fly here from Chicago and present to our student body. She's been recognized on Good Morning America, Oprah, all the top shows, so we'll see how it goes. She's supposed to have a film crew with her for a documentary, so we'll see how it goes on Friday, so you're more than welcome to come and check it out Friday, or Friday afternoon.
I think it was very impressive that students are.
It's all, all student-driven. Which is amazing.
Is that about 1:30?
Um, it'll start about 1, 1:00. We'll start at 1:15.
Tony, who's the, the debate?
Christina Wukic, our gifted teacher. She's done an amazing job. They're actually practicing tonight.
So if you come on the opening night, you might not have half the cast there, but...
Yeah, some of the leads are in the mock trial team, so we'll see how it goes.
Now, Dave Pernell was just telling me this afternoon about the band, and I think Dave, because I asked for some, he can write something up for the press, with the percussion?
He did, as far as their upcoming stuff.
Well, they just had a competition.
They had a competition. They had one at Norwin, I forget what place they came in, I think 11th out of 20-some schools in the region. Doing great things with them. If you haven't seen the show, it is pretty amazing. I actually saw it the first time they did it, and they didn't have the complete song done, and I was a little confused at the whole thing, but once you saw it all together with the face paint, their costumes, the aliens, the video, it all kinda comes together. It's pretty, pretty interesting.
They did have the senior showcase, and they actually had a competition, I think it was Saturday, and they actually placed. And I thought that was fantastic, and I was hoping that he might've been coming tonight too, but no. If you actually were at the senior showcase, the kids were all, I loved how they were dressed, the boys were bad scientists and the girls dressed as aliens. And it was all costumes, and the best part about it is they had the old-fashioned alien movies, UFO movies playing behind, and it was all quiet, you couldn't hear it, but they was making all the sounds, and for all the instruments, and it was just like you was watching an actual scientific movie, and kinda reminded me of going to Disney World, the Sci-Fi Cafe, and you were watching that just to hear the sounds, and it was very impressive.
The band will be at Disney next week.
Dan's going to Disney, and so is Mrs. Ising. She's actually coming down to watch that march on Tuesday.
Just happened to be coincide with the business trip, so I said, "Hey, why not? Go to Disney." Haven't been to Disney's. Those my kids were there, many years ago.
All right. And that's all we have for the Student of the Month. Couple other things, we talked about last month, or last week, I just wanted to know, did anyone get any follow-up from anyone who might've heard the presentation of the school lunch program that we did with Airmark? Because remember, we're considering going off the high school program for the free and reduced lunch program. I shouldn't say the free and reduced, I should say the government program, because we're gonna maintain the free and reduced.
Man, I can just speak for my kids' sakes, there were some comments from some of their friends that they would be interested in going off, that they could point that to an opportunity for some new and different selections that they haven't had yet. My daughter said the same thing.
I can add about 500 students that would say the same thing. They did a little petition about wanting to change the quality, quantity, price, and overall efficiency, so they're, they're interested in change.
Have they been following along with what we've been talking about with the presentations?
They have, and the press was here a few weeks back, and there was an article in the paper, did some interviews with students, took some pictures, and asked some questions about, you know, why they don't purchase lunches right now, and what it would take to get them to purchase more lunches.
Yeah, 'cause they're the ones, I mean, it's, like we said before, it's under 30% of the kids are eating.
Someone from another school district told me they wish that their kid, that their school district would do the same.
Just wanted to know if there was any feedback, and just to kinda remind you what we're doing, and we're gonna be discussing that more in April.
We're gonna vote on that in April, right? Dr. Harris?
Yep. Now, as far as anyone mentioning, I know we're going on tonight, it's on the agenda for the loan, did anyone have any follow-up or questions, concerns with that?
It's a line of credits, right?
A line of credits.
We don't usually, we don't pay anything on it. Correct.
But given the continuing budget impasse in Harrisburg, right now, we're, as it currently stands, we would receive $7 million less in state funding than we received last year. That's the approved budget that's on the, on the books right now. And it doesn't look like there's any progress with the elections coming up for all the House members and half of the Senate members, it's unlikely that there will be much action on a budget anytime soon. So it's very frustrating that here we are, working on our 16, 17 budget, and we have no idea what we're gonna get for the current year, we have no idea what we're gonna get next year, but yet we continue to meet all the deadlines that we are supposed to meet, and yet people in Harrisburg are now nine months past when they were supposed to have their budget passed, so very frustrating.
How much do we usually get in, how much did we get last year from the state?
Approximately four, well, just in basic subsidy and special education subsidy, around $16 million.
Okay, so we're almost losing half of it.
We're, basically, that's what they, that's what they are scheduled to release, about half. But it's, it's already been released, now there's nothing else coming at this point.
Is there been any talk amongst the school board association to just band together and shut down all the schools to kinda force their hand a little bit? 'Cause, I mean, that tells me if, if you would do that, you'd probably have a budget tomorrow. It's a risky move, but, you know, that's, it's a shame, because that's the one job that legislators have to do every year, is pass a budget. That's their only real job, and they can't do it. But I know that some of the districts in the southeastern part of the state were talking about that possibility, and I agree that if that were to happen, there would be a budget the next day. The problem is, there's just a lot of political problems with getting everybody to agree to the same day. But I, you're right, I think if that were to happen, they'd have a budget the next day.
I heard Buck Scotty wanted to do it. I remember there was a leader of that, but that's about, about two months ago, right after the holidays, or I haven't heard since. But it's gonna take something drastic.
Yeah. Jim, did you have a question about that?
I just wanted to comment, I think it upunto to our board that we are not as, as bad off as some other districts are, that our budget reserve has been at a point that we could, been able to stand stronger than some. I have some friends in other school boards, and they just say they're having a much tighter time than we are. So we're fortunate to be at this stage where it hasn't been as drastic. So, I compliment the board before I was on.
Thank you.
Also, superintendent and businessman deserve.
Breck, he stops me more.
Well, he's stopping me a lot more in the near future. Just keeps up.
And I just gotta talk a lot about the change orders that are on tonight. Did anyone have any further questions or concerns? Today's pretty much out, was pretty much, they described it pretty to you last week. That's all I have for information.
All right. Now, we're good to recognition of visitors. It is now time for audience recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, group affiliation, if any. Your statements be limited to five minutes in duration, and all statements shall be directed to the president, and no participants may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if the statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. Now, we do have one person to sign up, Mr. Denser?
Good evening. First of all, I want to apologize for my appearance. I was not in the band room getting ready for upcoming excursion for the band. What I was gonna wanna do today is give you some updates on what happened in the band since last meeting. We've already talked about some of them. On Tuesday, February 9th, they had a Fat Tuesday concert in a cafeteria, where they provided jambalaya and some Cajun-type food for a nice group of people that came. It was a really nice concert. On February 20th, the high school collar guard placed second at the Gateway Show. The middle school collar guard also placed second, and the high school...
First of all, I want to apologize for my appearance, I was not in the band room getting ready for upcoming excursion for the band. What I was, I want to do today is give you some updates on what happened in the band since last meeting, you've already talked about some of them. On Tuesday, February 9th, they had a Fat Tuesday concert in a cafeteria where they provided jambalaya and some Cajun-type food for a nice group of people that came, it was a really nice concert. On February 20th, the high school color guard placed second at the Gateway Show, the middle school color guard also placed second, and the high school concert percussion unit placed first at East Allegheny. On the 27th of February, the PT concert percussion, the middle school guard, and the hosted a show here at the high school. It was the tournament indoor association competition, which we had 36 outside units come and participate, and we'd like to thank Mr. Quillo for attending. The high school color guard performed at the Winter Guard International Pittsburgh Regional Championship, which was at Norwin High School, that's where they finished ninth out of 20 Florida, that's the one you were mentioning. That's the first time in five years they made the finals, so they had a really good show. It was a huge accomplishment for them. On Friday, March 4th, the concert band performed at Pops Concert here at the high school. We have two members that participated in the region band, which were David Reader and Brian Jones, and that was hosted at Valley High School last weekend. On March 11th, the high school concert percussion unit earned their second consecutive regional title at Richmond, Virginia. Their score was a 79.7, which is the second highest score throughout the nation, so they maintained their number-two national ranking. This year, they fell behind to King's Academy from Sunnyvale, California. The high school color guard earned third place at the Scholastic A Class Golden Triangle Show at East Allegheny, the middle school earned first place at the same show. Things we have coming up on Saturday, we have the, all three units, the percussion unit, the color, high school guard, and middle school guard are gonna be performing at California University. The times, if you're interested, percussion performs at 2:35, the middle school guard performs at 3:28, and the high school performs at 6:22. Following that, on Tuesday, March 22nd, they'll be going to Contemporary Resort in Florida, performing there. On Wednesday, the 23rd, they have a parade performs Magic Kingdom, and on the 24th, they are performing at Universal Studios. The junior high county band hosted at Norwin, and three schools will be participating on April 8th and 9th, we, three students, I'm sorry. Natalie Wilson will be competing with the oboe, Capri Scars, Scars Kelly, I don't know, screw those all, Scarselli will be a clarinet, and Danny Breck will be a tuba. We have a spring concert on April 30th at 7:00 PM, and they will be performing the premiere of Joy Ride, a Dr. Gary Zeke piece that was commissioned by the concert band, the Band Parents Association and Mr. Cornelius, and we'd also like to thank Dr. Harris for enabling him to come to the rehearsal, and he's actually gonna conduct the students for the premiere of that piece. And finally, two other things that we have, we're doing a Chick-fil-A fundraiser that's gonna be at the Chick-fil-A, the Green Gate Center, it's an all-day thing, that a portion of the money that people spend that say they're from Penn Trafford will go back into our band. Chick-fil-A's helping us with that, so if anybody needs...
What day is that?
What day? It's April 16th.
That's my best fundraiser.
What's that?
I can always go eat something.
Yeah, it's on April 16th, it's all day, so, you know, anytime if you're on Walmart or something running around, go and have a chicken sandwich, it'll help you. And finally, our new uniforms came in, and they're gonna be unveiled on Thursday, we're not sure where yet, because we were hoping to get to Jim, but there might be a conflict with false sports, so we're not really sure where that's gonna be yet, but it's gonna be somewhere Thursday evening. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to comment, I appreciate you making us aware of all the activities. One way that may, I don't want to say be more effective, but is if you want to send an email, so then people, like, where they're in front of their calendars, they can say, oh, I can make that, you know, because we could send email to, what's it, PT School Board at AOL.com?
PTSD School Board. No, PT School Board.
PT School Board.
At AOL.com.
Yeah, and then they'll get distributed, so people, when they're in front of their calendars, can look and...
Okay. Thank you.
The Chair's report, now entertaining motion, the Chair's report for month of February 2016, and high school extracurricular fund reports for the month of January and February 2016 to be approved and presented and made part of official minutes.
Motion, Dallas.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, second motion.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sissing, any question on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Entertaining motion to payment of bills for March 2016 to be paid as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Neme, second motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Matarazza. Any question on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any old business, Dr. Harris?
Nope.
All right, executive session, which we had prior to this, the Board-Helm Executive Session, immediately prior to tonight's meeting, to discuss personnel litigation, real estate, and confidential student matters, and to receive information from a superintendent. New business, athletic extracurricular, Mr. Dr. Cauchy.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a few things. Move to accept the following resignations effective immediately. Amanda Konce, varsity, Phil, hockey assistant coach, David Arnett, volunteer volleyball coach, Sean Lander, volunteer volleyball coach, Sean Manning, volunteer volleyball coach, David Martin, ninth grade head, boys basketball coach, Chad Wazo, seventh, eighth grade football coach, Steve Weir, seventh, eighth grade football coach.
I have motion, Dr. Cauchy, any second motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sissing, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches, all coaching volunteers must have Act 34-151 and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Jay Miller, baseball volunteer coach, Zachary Susawa, baseball volunteer coach.
I have motion by Dr. Cauchy, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That'll be all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Cauchy. Budget of fines, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve expenditures relating to the high school renovation project according to schedule as listed.
Second.
Mr. Kachasik, second, Mr. Neme, any question on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following change orders, these were reviewed at the previous meeting last week, as listed.
I have motion by Mr. Kachasik, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neme, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to accept and approve the audit financial statements in single audit of the Penn Trafford School District for the 2014-15 school year, as admitted by Sarpin Company Certified Public Accountants. A copy of the audit will be filed in the business office.
Okay, now that company is also...
Yeah, it's not Sarpin. Yes. It's... Zelensky and Axelrod, we'll correct it for the minutes.
Okay, I have a question, I have motion by Mr. Kachasik, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sissing, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the general operating budget for the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number Seven for fiscal year July 1st, 2016 to June period 2017, in the amount of $5,550,75 dollars. Penn Trafford School District's contribution will be $31,376.47.
Motion, Mr. Kachasik, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to authorize the administration to secure a line of credit and/or a short-term loan to cover state subsidy not received due to the Commonwealth bludgeoning passed. Interest incurred will be billed to the Commonwealth.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neme, any question on motion?
Question.
Question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just want to, all, all the school districts who are doing is borrowing money, they, that last statement to be billed to the Commonwealth, I think, is in everybody's minutes, just that we're not alone doing that.
That's all I have this season.
For the record, legislators are still being paid.
And you know what? One young reporter called me, and I said, and I did, it was in the paper, I said, why are they being paid while they're doing their job? It's just, I, I thank you for that, Mr. Leonard, that is very true, they're not doing their job, they shouldn't receive any paycheck. That might help sell things a lot quicker. Okay, Billy and Grant, Mr. Leonard?
I have nothing that needs the board to touch on tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations negotiated, Mrs. Sissing?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Sissing. Food service, Mr. Neme?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Sissing. Postponer, Mr. Stovall.
I have a few things. Move to approve additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of March 2016.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to accept the following retirement resignations, Pat Lahovic, June 30th, 2016, Janice Bowell.
Bow.
Bow.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. August 6th, 2016, Donna Graham, May 31st, 2016, Janice Howard, June 4th, 2016, David Nygro, end of the 2015-16 school year, and Frederick Runzer, June 30th, 2016.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Dr. Train, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I was gonna stop for a second to get, collectively, they only have about 110 years together as teaching, even though there's like a long list of teachers and building aides and custodians, a lot of them actually started later in their career at PT, so they might have a lot more years, but collectively, collectively, so they, it's only 110 years altogether, all of them are gonna be missed, they brought a lot of great things to the district, and we will be honored, and again, as we always do at the end of the year in June, so I just want to, so we're saving more of them, but I just wanted to make that because I have enough for now, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Good.
Okay, move to approve the following FMLA leave request, Matt Belinsky, April 22nd to May 6th, 2016, Sherry Lynn Cowell, unpaid leave beginning February 2nd, 2016, for six weeks or until cleared by position, Donna Graham, March 28th to April 25th, 2016, Jamie Hoplin, April 22nd to May 31st, 2016, and Nicolette Stope, August 19th to October 3rd, 2016.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sissing, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to issue a professional contract to Nicholas Campero in accordance with Section 1108 of the school laws of Pennsylvania, he has satisfactorily completed three years of teaching in the Penn Trafford School District.
Motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Matarazza, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Nick's an outstanding teacher, and it's hard to believe that three years went by quick, so thank you for that hire. He's chemistry at the high school, very nice, very nice young man, and he actually asked today, like, do a couple of extra things, extra in the summer, so I thought that was great.
Move to employ the following personnel, new employment is continued, appoint and receive all necessary documentation, and the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Carol Appleby, paraprofessional at Trafford Elementary School, effective Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, at $10.35 an hour. Bonnie Simon, part-time COTA, for 20 hours per week at $20 an hour, effective March 14th, 2016, and Lauren Yagla, English tutor at Penn Trafford High School, effective Tuesday, February 16th, 2016, at substitute daily rate.
I have motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following revisions to the makeup day schedule for the 2016-17 school calendar as follows, I'll just say as listed, we switched some...
I have motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Neme, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following conference request, Tony Aquilio and Greg Cappuccioni, Mass Customized Learning Conference from July 6th through the 8th, 2016, in Spearfish, South Dakota. Good luck. Ethic costs are approximately $27.50 to the district. Glenn Cooper, optimizing medical services at the secondary school setting on April 6th, 2016, in New York, New York at no cost to the district, and Amy Kelly, Summer Writing Institute at Columbia University in New York, from June 20th to 24th, 2016, at a cost of approximately $3,000 to the district.
Mr. Aquilio, when you, when you're with Cappuccioni, go out there, two places in South Dakota, big state, one place called Wall, which is their huge drug store, it's a small community, you can't believe it, you go to Sturgis, too, even though it's, you can't believe why people go to Sturgis, if you're there when the bikers are, you, they're bikers usually in August, how small it is compared to New York at that time, over half a million people go there, when you see that, you'll just shake your hand.
And that's in the evening, after the concert.
You go to the Black Hills, they're beautiful.
But this is actually good that they're doing the MCL conference, because I know the board asked tonight, I was talking about new things we want to do, and they said, well, what about these old, and Mr. Cauchy, Dr. Cauchy, they said, what about these old goals? We have these old, and I'm like, we're not getting rid of them, they're just adding more things to it, but that's good to see, the MCL we had was still continuing with this.
It's a nice time here to go there. Okay, I have motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the expulsion of student 2015-16001 per the terms of the agreement.
I have motion, Mr. Stovall, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Matarazza, any question on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And then move to approve the following student-teacher assignments as listed.
Thank you, Mr... I have, motion by Mr. Stovall, any second on motion? Second, Mr. Kachasik, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Stovall, I was hitting myself. All right, policy, public relations, legislated, Mr. Matarazza.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, February 1st, 2016.
I have motion by Mr. Matarazza, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Neme, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I'd also like to move to approve the student assistant program agreement for the 2016-2017 school year between Penn Trafford School District, Westmoreland County Drug and Alcohol Commission, and the Westmoreland County Behavioral Health and Development Service Program. The district will agree to cooperate in the development of the student assistant program initiative in accordance with the current student assistant program guidelines for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
I have motion, Mr. Matarazza, any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neme, any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
And I'm glad that you approved that every year, because that's so needed.
And last, I'd like to move to give final approval to the following board policies